I want to move. I move that the board of supervisors approve a signing agreement with CEP Solar LLC for the purpose of 25 megawatt utility scale solar energy facility.
Second.
It's moved in second. That we approve the signing agreement with CEP Solar LLC. Ms. Cooper Jones?
Yes.
Yes, Pride. Supervisor Gillum?
Yes.
Supervisor Townsend?
Yes.
Supervisor Emmert?
Yes.
Supervisor Booth? Supervisor Wilk? And Supervisor Jones? That's been approved. Thank you so much. Our second public hearing is an ordinance regarding the making of fires, and that is going to be presented by Ms. Sarah Puckett.
Madam Chair and members of the board, as the board is aware, recent weather conditions, and that would have been the ones prior to the winter storm, resulted in dangerous fire conditions in Prince Edward County. The county administrator had enacted an emergency burn ban through the declaration of local emergency, and at its December meeting, the board enacted an emergency ordinance to help remedy the ability of the county to enact and enforce burn bans. Before you tonight is a draft ordinance that we're bringing to you through the public hearing process so that this can become a permanent ordinance that gives the county the ability to more readily enforce burn bans when necessary. Happy to answer any questions that the board. This is the exact ordinance that the board adopted as an emergency ordinance in December that the county attorney had reviewed then.
Are there any questions? All right, may we have a motion for adoption of the ordinance?
So moved. Second.
Okay.
Did you close public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry. Public hearing is closed. I'm sorry. So we have a motion for adoption.
So moved. Second.
It's a motion in second that we adopt this ordinance. Ms. Cooper Jones?
Yes.
Pride, yes. Supervisor Gillum?
Yes.
Supervisor Townsend?
Yes.
Supervisor Emmert?
Yes.
Supervisor Booth? Supervisor Wilk? And Supervisor Jones. So the ordinance has been. Thank you. So it's been adopted. Thank you so much. Okay, do we have Mr. Jeffrey Jones present? He was the solid waste general manager.
No, ma'am. You're going to have to have Sarah Puckett.
No problem.
Representing Mr. Jeffrey Jones.
That's fine.
So in December, the board issued an invitation for bid for the replacement of the compactor at the landfill. And I know this has been long discussed about the
Thank you.
status of the equipment in the operation of the landfill. So Mr. Jones prepared some remarks, and I promised to deliver them in his absence. He said, first, I would like to thank the board for supporting the solid waste department as we have grown and we continue to grow. The compactor we would like to purchase has a weight of 94,000 pounds. The current compactor weighs 46,000 pounds. The new one will compact better and faster than the old one, which will help us save time and money when having to build new cells. It will prolong the life of what we already have. It will also help break down the trash better and make it easier to cover using less dirt to do so. I've been in discussions with LaBella, the county's new solid waste engineering firm, on how to save and better manage the landfill operations. The purchase of a heavier compactor was one of their first recommendations. We have already found items that will and have saved the county money as far as water and gas testing. This new machine will be a big step forward in making the landfill more efficient, both operationally and financially in the future. Thank you again, Jeff Jones. So we issued the invitation for bid, and the county only received one bid, and that's the one in front of you from Carter Cat. The price is $180,000, and I know there are people in this room that are far more knowledgeable about compactors than I am. So you have the specs in front of you, but I dare say I probably can't answer any of your questions. But I expect David or Lou can. So I will bow to their knowledge on any questions you may have. But we would recommend that the board consider accepting this bid and authorizing the purchase of this equipment.
Sarah, two things I want to add. A couple of things I want to add. One, we say replacement. Really, we're going to keep the old unit. That'll be our backup, our spare, so that when you need to bring this one down to work on it and do its regular routine maintenance, we've got a piece of equipment put back on the pile and keep things moving. In the past, we've had to shut down. And so that's going to make us much more efficient in handling of the waste at the facility. As you mentioned, the way the machine, we're going to get better compaction. You know, we had talked about the capital improvement plan, about buying a new piece of equipment. We were, at the time, talking about something 750, 800,000 for a brand-new piece of equipment. We're buying one that's now 10, 11 years old, but Jeff feels that with the hours, 13,000 hours on it, we can get another 10 years of this piece of equipment. So really, what it's going to allow us to do is to push down the road the replace, I call it replacement or purchase, of a new compactor, probably in the five to 10-year window when we have to replace the current one. But it'll, it's a low-cost option. But, you know, Cat has already had it. They've looked it over. Jeff's already got a handful of little smaller things he wants fixed on it before we take possession of it. But it's in pretty good shape and been maintained relatively well. I believe Bedford had the piece of equipment prior, so we know the history and where it came from. And I think Jeff's even talked to the folks in Bedford. So it's a good piece of equipment. It's been well-maintained and taken care of. Any warranty come with it? That's a good question.
No.
No warranty.
Yeah, as is.
Where was this on the special capital private?
It. Give me just a sec.
That's a good question.
I can tell you.
And what was that price tag again, Sarah?
180,000. Yes, ma'am. It's on the backside of that bid sheet.
Okay.
Give me just a second. I'm going to answer Supervisor Townsend's question. This was tied for number two.
Tied for number two?
It was, we had three projects tied for number two, including elementary school revenue sharing and compactor replacements. It was very high on the list. And we had, again, 750,000 in the budget for that.
What do you think, Dave?
Well, I think we need it. I would ask them to deliver it for free. They're trying to sell it. That's just what I would ask. They're asking for $3,100 to bring it 60 miles. There's plenty of trucking companies that'll do it for half that.
I think, I remember Jeff saying they have to take the tracks off, and there was, I'm going to say, some process involved.
Yep. That's over 90,000. That's their setup. They're going to charge you 2,400 for the setup once you get it back here. Not saying that you haggle so much, but I certainly would ask for it.
I would.
Yep.
Yes. And everybody agrees with that.
Is it worth it, Pride?
With the hours on that machine, it probably is. That's about a, that's probably a 260, 270,000 dollar machine with any kind of warranty or anything. So your $80,000 will do a tremendous amount of work on it if you had to do anything. Bobby, you, Bobby, you there? It's 13,000 on it. I was looking to see what engine was in it, but it 826.
Let's set it at the bottom, that 8225.
225.
Yeah, that's just a, no, that's not a, it's an engine number, but it's a parts number.
I know that Jeff and Paul went and looked at it and I'm going to say operated it.
Sure. Bobby, did you hear that it came from Bedford? Okay, I don't know if you heard that or not.
If you do the math on mileage, if it was in a road truck at 50 miles, that's 650 road miles. Usually, any large engine like it, 500,000 is when it needs a rebuild. I'd like to know if that engine's been touched.
Yeah, that's something we certainly can ask.
Yeah. I'm just, I'm on machinerytrader.com, just looking at some of the different ones. There's a 2012 826H. Of course, it's got 8,000 hours on it, but it's 491,000. Just trying to look at some, get some comparables, you know.
With the hours, it's about a 250 to 280,000 dollar machine.
I'm texting Jeff to see if he can hop on the phone. He's
Here's a 2010 with 9,300 hours, 269,000. I think that's probably the worst case, what? Is you got to rebuild the engine. David, you think?
Yeah, the rest, I mean, it's pretty much a steel machine other than the engine and the final drives. It's expensive to go into that engine, but it's not $80,000 expensive. When you come out 12,000 to 15,000, you could go in.
You think it was a good deal?
I think it's reasonable. I don't, I don't, Jeff won't
Jeff on the phone if you, can you talk? Okay, I'm going to put you on speaker in the board meeting. There's a couple of questions, and I don't know the answers. Okay, just one sec.
Hey, Jeff, do you know if the engine has ever been anything done to it?
The Bedford County had it there, municipal landfill, before they traded it into Carter Cat when it was, when Bedford landfill was closed down. And Carter Cat did a full, complete rebuild assessment on the machine, and nothing was rated in the, they do a red, orange, and green. Nothing was rated in anything in the orange or the red. Everything was in the green. There is a few little things that is wrong with it. The Caterpillar and Lynchburg has already agreed to repair and fix if we do purchase it from them. A few hoses, a belly pan has been, a couple bolts are broke, you know, little knick-knack stuff like that. But Carter Cat and Lynchburg has already told me that if we purchase it at the asking price, they will repair it, and it will be ready to go to work when we get it. But me and Paul have went up there and drove the machine, operated it. None of the cylinders leak, none of the seals leak. No stuff like that is wrong with the machine at all.
So have a question then.
And it's a 2011, so it is a pre-death machine.
Correct. That is. The other question that was just asked, Jeff, was if you would call them and ask them or whoever, if they would deliver it for free. They can't do anything but say no. But they're, that's a pretty good price tag for delivery. I've been in the trucking business a pretty good while, and that's, that's pretty hefty.
Yeah, well, those wheels, I mean, the machine sits like it does if the wheels on it is over 16 foot wide. So they have to take the wheels off to haul again.
But according to this, according to this paper here, they're going to charge us $2,400 for the reset up, which they're going to be putting them back on.
Yeah, they have to take them off. They have to haul the machine separate from the wheels, and they have to haul the blade separate from the wheels and the machine. So it'll be three tractor trailer loads of equipment coming to the landfill, and they have to set it all up, put it back together, block it up, you know, and all that kind of stuff. You know, in the machine, the wheels have to be picked up with a crane off a truck. They can't be moved with a forklift or anything like that. But I can't ask if they will, you know, either do the delivery for free or the setup for free, but then they may do me the kickback on a few items that I want repaired, you know, before they do the, before they sell it to us.
Understandable. They're the ones trying to sell it.
Well, yeah, and that's true too. But I know, like, we replaced some hydraulic hoses on the 963B the other week. It was almost $2,000, and it wasn't before hoses.
I understand where you're coming from.
I mean, they're, you know, two-inch hoses, and it wasn't before foot long, but, you know, they got compression fittings and O-rings. And I mean, David, you know, that stuff adds up pretty quick.
It does. It does. Just something to ask. It's not a, I mean, the board's going to make a decision here in a minute anyway, but just, just, you know, you can always ask. They can't do anything to say no.
Yeah, I can, yeah, I can call Jim Buchanan tomorrow and say, hey, you know, can you do me a little better? You know, we can write you a check or cash money sale. We can, you know, do it by the end of the week. Can you do me a little better? And just see what he says.
You know, that's all the questions I have.
So my question is, do we wait until Jeff talks with them tomorrow to see what they would offer? Or do we go ahead and try to make a motion over there now?
I personally think we need to make the motion and just ask them to ask them. He doesn't have to tell them that we've, that we've
Because this is a pretty good deal, okay.
But that's
He can get it a little bit cheaper, that'd be fine. If you don't.
Jeff, I have one other question. You talked about you knew it needed some repairs. Approximately, how much would those repairs cost?
To be honest with you, I can't answer that because I don't know. It's got a couple hoses leaking under the belly pan, and I don't know exactly how long they are, the diameter. We couldn't get that in depth of it, but Carter Cat and Lynchburg did guarantee me that they would be repaired
Okay.
before it was brought to me if we purchased it. And I buy a lot of parts from them on their, on a regular basis for the other five or six machines we have. And they do deliver my parts for free anyway, and overnight them for free, you know, already as an aspect of something they do a little bit extra for us. They drop them off at Lucky Stone for us at the drop box, which we've never had an issue with them, you know, charging us anything like that before. They always overnight them for free. But as far as the repair estimate, I can't give you that because I don't know the size of the hoses, the length, or anything.
Okay, thank you, Jeff.
I agree with David on questioning this.
And it could be something as small as a O-ring and a compression fitting, or it could be where the fitting is pressed on. It could be a multitude of things. It could range anywhere from a 99 cent O-ring to a $1,500 hose.
Right.
50 miles, roughly $10 a mile for a heavy carrier. Free trucks, that's $1,500.
It won't hurt to ask.
Don't hurt to ask. Can't say no.
Yeah. No, so it's good we have a board with some experts who know a lot about this. That's a good thing. Well.
I was a little out of my league presenting.
Yes. A little mind, but that is good, to know that.
Bobby, that just means we run a lot of junk.
It's all good.
Well, at this point, could we have a motion to accept the bid?
So moved.
I second.
Okay, so moved in second that we accept this bid. Ms. Patty Cooper Jones?
Yes.
Pride, yes. Supervisor Gillum?
Yes.
Supervisor Townsend?
Yes.
Supervisor Emmert?
Yes.
Supervisor Booth? Supervisor Wilk? And Supervisor Jones? Thank you. So that motion has been accepted. Accepted. Thank you so much, Sarah. All right, the next item that we have is Ms. Sherri McGuire of the Executive Director of Longwood Small Business Development Center.
Good evening, good evening, Madam Chair. Members of the board. Thank you so much for giving me a few minutes of your time. We have a lot of exciting things going on at Longwood in economic development and small business support, and I thought it would be great to share some of those items with you. I have tonight a highlight on our SBDC services and the impact specifically in Prince Edward County. A brief perspective and an introduction to one of our unique small business clients, Sarah Beecham from Habitat Restore. And we have some exciting regional projects to talk about tonight, including a potential innovation hub for Midtown Square. So I'm very excited to be with you and talk about these things. Let me see if I can make this work. Am I hitting the right button? Obviously.
Well, Sherri, we're going to exit your presentation. Be around five or six minutes. That would be good.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Oh, there it goes. Yep.
Moved it down.
There we go.
Great. So briefly, the Small Business Development Center program is intended to be an economic development partnership program to support small businesses. It is funded by the Small Business Administration in partnership with Longwood and matching funds from the localities that we serve, 25 localities, including Prince Edward. Our results are measured by the impact that our small business clients have in the community. And our goal is working with them to increase profitability, sales, growth in employment, all of which return tax dollars to the localities that we serve. For those considering startups, you know, we look for ways to make them more successful and to discover early on if that is not a good business idea for them. They preserve their resources for other projects down the road. Next slide, please. So here you see the full range of our geographic coverage. The headquarters here at Longwood is our central region base, home base. We also have offices serving the eastern part of our region and the western part, which extends all the way to Martinsville. Next slide, please. A brief summary of services, as I stated before. Startup services, analyzing and seeking funding for new and existing businesses, analyzing and comparing their business performance to industry, and then finding strategic ways to grow the businesses as we did with a program that we shared with Habitat Restore. Next slide, please. These are a few resources that we have by virtue of having database subscriptions at Longwood, and these are resources that are available to the economic development community. They allow us to understand the makeup of area businesses, the key success factors, trends and potential growth areas, employment patterns, commuting patterns, and finally, the market potential for various types of businesses in the area. So these are available to economic developers, and we have supported the Economic Development Office here in Prince Edward as well as the Commonwealth Regional Council with some of these services. Next slide, please. So down to the economic impact here in Prince Edward. In the last fiscal year, we had 100 clients that we worked with, either training or consulting. 60% of those were existing businesses. 40% were startups. And of the existing businesses that we worked with, we always have them register and tell us what their business makeup is. They reported over 300 employees and total taxable sales of over $35 million. So they were significant contributors to the economy. They also reported being able to raise over $400,000 in additional capital investment for their business and create or retain 121 jobs, which is significant during COVID. Okay. And now for our business spotlight. We have Sarah Beecham with Habitat Restore. She took advantage of a program we had this past year called Refocus 2021 to help businesses reorganize through the times of COVID. So I'll have her come up and just tell you a brief amount of her experience.
Thank you, Sherri.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me. My name is Sarah Beecham. I'm the Restore Director for Piedmont Habitat for Humanity Restore here in Farmville, right next to Food Line. I took advantage of the Refocus 2021 program that they offered because everything was changing so drastically, so rapidly with COVID and just trying to kind of get our feet back under us after having the rug pulled out from underneath us with everything. It helped to keep us going. The insights and business guidance that they gave us helped to keep us to not have to close our doors. I didn't have to lay off any of my staff or employees. None of them had to go and be put on unemployment. I was able to retain everybody to work through our shutdown and to get built back up again. This is not the first time I have worked with the SBDC. I worked with them once before, about three years ago, with a program that they offered. What they offer there is absolutely wonderful. The support they give, it really helps people. And I wish more people knew about the programs and stuff that they offer and the support that they give. At the Restore, we average, we contribute to that sales tax that she was talking about. We probably contribute about $10,000 a year just in sales tax that we collect just at the Restore. And that doesn't include any of the other activities that Habitat for Humanity does. It's just the Restore. I'm a little nervous talking in front of people. I feel like the SBDC offers a nice circle of support. It's not just them. It's them helping you to branch out and reach out to other people here in the community to help support one another. And that's what it boils down to. We need to support one another, to help Farmville grow, to help Prince Edward County grow. And I just, I can't say enough about Sherri and the programs that are offered at SBDC.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Beecham. Sherri, you have about three more minutes.
Yes, ma'am. So on to the next slide, please, of special projects. We have been part of a regional planning and implementation initiative through Go Virginia in partnership with Mid-Atlantic Broadband and SoV Innovation Hub, which has allowed us to offer a new 10-week startup course that is available region-wide. A youth entrepreneurship pilot program, which is open to any student in the region, in the high school areas, in or out of the classroom. It can be delivered in the classroom by the teachers with flexibility. And we have a collegiate business plan competition that is open to any college student in the area, whether they're attending college here or they live here and attend college somewhere else. So those are some new programs. Next slide, please. And then finally, one of the most exciting things is the new innovation hub that we have planned for Midtown Square. So as part of that, there will be maker spaces, some co-working spaces, educational meeting spaces, an SBDC office, partnerships between Longwood and Hampton-Sidney College, where we both deliver innovation courses there for the community. SBCC is going to use the facility for training and leaders, leads into their STEM and trades programs, business consulting, and a lot of K-12 usage. We've had involvement from the K-12 system in designing the space and making plans for what goes into it. We have raised over $1 million, 1.1 million so far, from the Tobacco Commission and from Go Virginia at the state level. We still have a chunk to go, so we will be applying to the U.S. Economic Development Administration for the remaining construction costs. But we see this as a really valuable use of that space in putting some of our academic programs into a more accessible venue and being able to train teachers and have students come through and just change the mindset, teach innovation and entrepreneurship at all levels. So that's our most
Yeah, one question, Sherri. How do you provide this information to the schools? You say you get the schools involved. How do you let them know about the program?
We have had our superintendents involved in our planning process. They've been at the table, both Prince Edward and Cumberland.
Okay.
And we've had constant conversations with the STEM faculty, the STEM teachers. So engaging them, trying to find times when we can meet with them and they can join our work groups, you know, continuing that interaction as much as possible.
Thank you so much, Sherri.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that.
I'll be happy to take any questions outside of this. My contact information is there.
Appreciate that much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda are our county administrator, Mr. Stanley, to talk about the water of the contract of broadband services. Mr. Stanley. Mr. Stanley?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Back in November, the county advertised a request for proposals, RFP, from private firms to provide an expansion of broadband access and capacity into all unserved areas of Prince Edward, Cumberland, Lunenburg Counties. The primary purpose of the RFP was to meet procurement requirements and identify prospective firms that can provide broadband services, allow the county to use the VATI grant process to leverage state and federal grant funds to deliver such services. The RFP requested that proposals include proposed unserved project areas to be served by the offerer, description of the internet service offered, demonstration of knowledge and experience applying for federal and state granting, funding opportunities, demonstrated financial capabilities of the offer to provide a minimum match of 25% towards project cost. County participation should be limited to no more than 10% of project cost. Demonstrated ability to apply for, win, and administer federal and state funding. The project should serve at least 5,000 potential customers, with at least 90% being residential customers. Proposals requiring counties' investment should provide formula provision for ongoing revenue sharing, a statement of the offer's availability to provide service to proposed unserved areas within three years or less, estimation of one-time and monthly service fees to average residential customers, summary of qualifications, and I think the fact is the county received one proposal from Connect Telecom, that's copies in your packet. Connect's proposal meets the requirements as identified in the RFP. Connect's also previously received a $9.975 million grant from the FCC to provide broadband to unserved areas of the three counties. The IDA, with approval from the board, has approved a request to solicit a loan up to $4 million to the Tobacco Commission to allow Connect to advance the project over a four-year period in lieu of the 10-year period in the ARDOF grants. The ARDOF is the federal money, so basically a million a year for 10 years. Connect is hoping to serve Prince Edward County and the other two counties in a little over four, four and a half years. In order to do that, what the IDA is proposing is to advance them a $4 million loan through the Tobacco Commission to, in essence, upfront some of that money they're gonna be getting from ARDOF. So the ARDOF money is coming in over 10-year period, but we're gonna spend it all in about five years or less. And it's meeting on May 11, 2021. The board voted to support the $1 million to $4 million Tobacco Commission loan for the Connect's project. The Tobacco Commission has approved a $4 million loan which will allow...